Good evening and welcome to the August twenty-second meeting of the zoning board of appeals. Call the meeting to order and also ask everyone to please silence their cell phones at this time. I'll introduce the board, starting with my far right, your far left is James Morse, who's an associate member of the board. My name is T.J. Hurry, I am the chairman of the board. To my left is Ed Van Kuren, who is a full voting member, followed by Bob Dugan, who is the board's clerk, and Mary Berry, who is an associate member as well. Also with us tonight is Noreen Stockman, who is the zoning administrator, and Ashley DeMello, who has graciously volunteered her time to be the recording secretary tonight. The zoning board of appeals is charged with applying the zoning bylaws for the town and considers requests for special permits, variances, and appeals as provided in the bylaws, which have been approved by town meeting and the attorney general's office for the Commonwealth. All decisions are made through the public hearing process. The board's goal is to hear testimony from the applicant and the public, and also to allow full and fair discussion of the project prior to rendering a decision. To begin each hearing, the clerk will read the public announcement of the hearing, and then present any pertinent information from the file, such as referrals from town departments and correspondences to and from the board. The applicant or the applicant's representative will then have fifteen minutes to make a presentation, and time may be extended by vote of the board. The board will then ask questions to the applicant, and the public will be invited to comment as well. Public comment should be directed only at the project, and we also ask you to please refrain from making any personal or derogatory statements, but such public comment can include an opinion in favor or in opposition, or it just might simply be a question about the nature of the project. The chair will limit discussion in the interest of time if the comments become repetitive. All members of the public wishing to speak should wait to be recognized by the chair and should come to the podium to my right, your left, and we also ask that you please state your name and address for the record. In typically public comment, we limit it to two minutes per person. We will then either close or continue the hearing. When the board is satisfied that enough information has been presented by testimony and in the file to make a decision, by motion and vote of the board, the hearing will then be closed. In the alternative, we may continue the hearing to a future date and time certain. After the hearing is closed, no more testimony may be taken. And as for any board discussion and decision, the board may then further discuss the project among ourselves, and a motion to deny or approve will be made and voted upon. Such a motion will include a summary of key findings and conditions. An affirmative vote of four members, which is a supermajority, is required for approvals of motions on special permits, variances, and appeals. A split vote such as a three to two vote would be a failure to carry and would result in denial of the project. Under Massachusetts general law, if a special permit is denied, the applicant cannot return to the board for two years unless the project is substantially different. So, turning to our agenda items for tonight, we have four, I'm sorry, three new hearings, four continuations, and we also have open meeting agenda items. And first on the agenda tonight is public comment. And this is new for our board to adopt public comment. You may have seen this from the selectmen and other boards, so if there's any public comment not related to a case before the board tonight, if anyone wishes to speak on something not on the agenda tonight, please do so. Sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, citizens, friends of Falmouth. I speak on the Massachusetts stretch energy code. The Massachusetts energy code is part of the Massachusetts building code. The stretch energy code is an optional energy code that any town or city in Massachusetts may adopt if it chooses. And in those towns that do choose a stretch energy code, that replaces the base energy code, which otherwise spells out the minimum energy efficiency requirements for every part of Massachusetts. The stretch energy code calls for more in terms of energy efficiency, specifically the overall performance of a structure in terms of energy efficiency. And it has a number of advantages. Two-hundred-and-seventy-two of the three-hundred-and-fifty-one cities and towns in Massachusetts have already adopted the stretch energy code. Ten of the fifteen towns on Cape Cod have already adopted the stretch energy code. The stretch energy code is a code that most builders are already familiar with. And in terms of what it applies to, the stretch energy code applies only to brand-new residential and commercial construction. It does not apply to additions, renovations, or alterations. Finally, once upon a time, there used to be a great big difference between the base energy code and the stretch energy code. That's gone. There's almost no difference now. For example, how tight a structure has to be sealed against air infiltration, no difference. Insulation of the foundation, the floor, the walls, the ceiling, no difference between the base code and the stretch code. Requirement for mechanical ventilation, no difference between the base code and the stretch code. The differences come when it has to do with the windows, domestic hot water, heating, cooling, and the possibility of leakage from the HVAC ducts. So, builders have a great deal of choices in those matters, heating, cooling, windows, ducts, hot water. The choices they make are designed to achieve greater energy efficiency. I'll close with that tonight. I'm hoping that we can all begin thinking of the stretch code. It would be a great benefit to Falmouth. I thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you, sir. And I'm sorry, your name?
Oh, I'm sorry. I was supposed to give you that. I beg your pardon. My name is Grant Walker. I live at seventy-one Philadelphia Street. That's in the Maravista Peninsula, precinct three. I'm a town meeting representative.
Thank you, Mr. Walker.
Thank you.
Anyone else care to comment on anything that's not on the agenda tonight? Seeing none. Entertaining motion to take item two of the open meeting?
Yes, I'll make a motion to take item two, open meeting, number sixty-five dash fifteen, McDonald trustee, ninety-one Priscilla Street, tee ticket, out of order.
Motion was made by Bob. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ed. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, we have application sixty-five dash fifteen, McDonald trustee, ninety-one Priscilla Street, and tee ticket, a board determination that substantial use of the special permit is commenced and will not lapse at the end of the extended term. And I believe Attorney Amet, you're here to speak on that?
Thank you, Mr. Hurry, members of the board. I'm Bob Amet, a Falmouth attorney. I represent Paul McDonald, who obtained a special permit in two thousand and fifteen to be able to build a single-family dwelling on a small lot in Maravista. His house backed up on the lot. The board of appeals in two thousand and fifteen determined that the vacant lot had not merged. It was a separate lot, and also granted the special permit for the lot to be built upon. That special permit was extended in two thousand and seventeen for a two-year period that ends later in the fall. The request before the board is either to extend the special permit for another three years, which is now allowable, or, in our preference, is that you make a determination that because of the circumstances, the special permit has been exercised, is not subject to lapse, and therefore an extension is not necessary. That was the determination of the building commissioner based on Massachusetts case law for two reasons. First, primarily because Massachusetts case law has held that when an owner has two lots adjacent to one another, one of which has a house on it, the other one of which is buildable because of a special permit, if the house is sold, that's a substantial exercise of rights because without a special permit at that point, the vacant lot would be of no value. And so, that's the circumstance in this case, that a ruling, was a ruling of the Supreme Judicial Court. It's also been cited by the appeals court. I understand that the town council, who is here tonight, has advised the zoning administrator that he agrees with the building commissioner's determination that this property remains buildable with the benefit of the special permit and will not lapse even after the expiration of the current term. Now, a decision of the building commissioner, an opinion of the building commissioner, even an opinion of town council is not the kind of determination that gets recorded at the registry of deeds, puts the public on notice, and gives a binding record. And so, we are asking the board of appeals to make that finding, which it should do if it agrees that an extension is not required. And also point out, and another reason justifying the determination is that the property is subject to the Little Pond Sewer District sewer betterment. Mr. McDonald made a determination in two thousand and fifteen. He could have opted out of having a betterment imposed on the property by having the property declared unbuildable. Instead, we went and got the determination of the board because that the lot was buildable. And Mr. McDonald has been making the payments on the sewer betterment in reliance on that decision. So, that reliance on the special permit, both in conveying the adjacent house and the payment of the betterments, is an exercise of rights under the betterment, consistent with Massachusetts law, as determined by the building commissioner with the approval, I believe, of the town council. And we'd ask you to make that determination. And we have submitted to you a proposed motion that set forth the facts and the proposed finding for you to make.
Thank you, Attorney Amet. Any questions?
No questions.
Okay. And I do have a copy of the proposed findings. That substantial use of the special permit has commenced, so sure we can adopt that in the findings. There's no questions? Would anyone like to make a motion? Not everyone wants.
So, how would we, how would we extend this, just in perpetuity?
So, in terms of the special permit?
I mean, we would just say that the special permit could, I don't know if you have the wording, it just would not expire?
I have prepared a motion that would, we, one of you or I would be happy to read as a suggestion that sets forth what I've said and then the requested conclusion.
All right, so then I'll make, I'll make a motion that the board find that the special permit sixty-five dash fifteen is no longer subject to lapse, that an extension of said permit is not necessary for Locust to retain its status under said special permit as a building lot, and a building permit for a single-family dwelling may issue accordingly at any time hereafter, subject to conditions one, two, and three of said permit.
All right. So, there was a motion by Bob. It was second by Ken. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Okay, now turning to our new hearings, we have application forty-six dash nineteen, Walmart Store Inc., one thirty-seven Tee Ticket Highway and Tee Ticket.
So, application number forty-six dash nineteen, being all persons deemed affected by the board of appeals under section eleven of chapter forty-eight of the Mass general laws, you are hereby notified that Walmart Stores Inc. of Tee Ticket Mass applied to the zoning board of appeals for a special permit pursuant to sections two forty, one sixty A of the Code of Falmouth to stage four, forty-foot trailers to be used for storage of products during the holiday season on subject property known as one thirty-seven Tee Ticket Highway, Tee Ticket Mass. For referrals assessors includes lot sixteen dash two, fifteen dash two, and lots eleven, thirteen, fifteen, seventeen, and twenty-nine in Landport. Planning, no comment. Fire department, no comment. That's it.
For the applicant tonight?
Hi, my name's Danielle Smith, and I am the store manager at the Walmart in Falmouth. Over the past several years, I think ever since the building has been there, they've always had trailers. And I guess the past two years, they had several issues with the previous store manager upkeeping the trailers and partnering with the community. So, as of last year, I took over the building, and I've been working extremely hard to try to mend the relationship with Walmart and the community and try to make sure that we're a good neighbor to everybody. So, last year was our first year with the trailer since I've been in the building, and everything ran smoothly. We had no complaints at all. We kept the lot nice and clean, and I'm looking to get the same amount of trailers this year. My concern is that last year, we did a really good job partnering with the community and the Falmouth Police Department with Stefan Cruiser. We partnered with the Marine Toys for Tots. We helped out the Falmouth Service Center with several donations for Christmas toys and clothing and such. So, without these trailers, I will not have the capacity in my building to store all of this extra stuff that typically we help the community to donate items for.
Okay. Any questions from the board?
I have none.
No. No questions.
Any questions, comments, concerns regarding this project from any members of the public out there tonight? Yep? Yeah, if you can come to the podium.
Thank you. My name is Deborah Phillips. I live at Three Oak Street. I'm a director butter to the rear of Walmart. My first question is if you can tell me where the location.
Ask the question through the, through the board.
I'm trying to determine where the location of the containers might be.
Sure.
Will they be in the rear? Will they be over on the side? That's a little bit of concern to me, and I can go on about that. But that's my first question, is where will they be located?
Any other questions?
Yes, I'd like to know if anyone can clarify for me what their allowed hours of operation are. I'm not asking about when the doors open for business specifically. I'd like to know if someone can tell me what times they are allowed to offload the trucks and specifically what times they are allowed to do forklift operations on the exterior of the building, on the premises.
Okay. Got you those answers.
Okay. Shall I sit?
So, the trailers, we were gonna park them in the front lot, similar to how we did last year. I don't know if you saw where they were. Last year, they were right up front, kind of up against where the grassy area is. I did try to reach out to the landlord several times, and he does not want the trailers in the front of the parking lot. He's requesting that I place them in the back. However, it is ultimately up to the town, and that's what I'm gonna return with him with. I would prefer them in the front because I know that, you know, we have a lot of neighbors back there. And when the winter comes, the trees go away, and you guys can pretty much see everything, and I don't think you wanna see a trailer. And as far as the hours of operation, it is from eleven P.M. until six A.M. However, I try to stop my team from going out there after ten o'clock, and then typically they open the doors backed up about six A.M. But I'm more than willing to give you my phone number, and if there's ever any issues, you can call me, text me anytime.
If you ask any questions, you'd have to come to the podium. I'm sorry.
Thank you for that information. So, just to re, to clarify and reconfirm, if the forklift is going to conduct operations, that can be allowed at any time after six A.M. Is that what I heard? Okay, all right. Thank you. That's what I wanted to know. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just had one question. So, on the map you gave us, it showed the trail location in that front section?
Yes.
But you've got four forty foot, so they'd go the whole length, correct?
Yep. It's not the whole length. It's about three-quarters of the length. We butt the two rears together, so it ends up being like two large eighty foot.
There ever been any issues in the past?
Prior to my arrival of being there, several. So, I think that's where a lot of the concerns are coming from because Walmart hasn't had a very good history in this town. So, I've been working extremely hard trying to mend those relationships.
When, when they come to drop off the trailers, who do they speak to directly? Just so, I know, just you, 'cause I know last year was the problem.
Me. I think everybody in the town has my number, so.
Dumped in different locations, so.
Yeah, no. They call me, they call me directly. I go right out there with them, and I have them park exactly where I want them to.
Any other members of the public have any other questions, comments, concerns regarding this project? Did you have another question?
Well, I, if I'm hearing the, the butter correctly, there's concern about the location, that they would rather have it further in the front of the lot. Is that correct?
The landlord is requesting that they be placed in the back of the lot.
I understand that.
Only because, I guess, I guess previously, last year, we didn't have this issue, but previously, there was a lot of not-so-nice people, maybe homeless people, living in the woods and hiding inside the trailers. I did not have that issue at all last year, and I don't foresee that being an issue this year.
Okay, I'm just trying to determine if there's a location that would be better that we could ask for based on the concerns of butters. That would still work in terms of protecting the trailers. What's your feeling?
I mean.
'Cause I realize you're, you're at the whim of the landlord, but as you pointed out, if we ask, if we say that we'd like it somewhere else.
I think the landlord will, will obviously work with me. I mean, if the town approves for me to have them in the front, like we did last year, then I think I can, you know, have a conversation with the landlord, and I think he'll approve that. His main concern was that he didn't want, obviously, to attract the wrong crowds in the building or around the building. And then, obviously, he's extremely concerned with, with the neighbors that we have behind us. So, he made it very clear, like, if you can park possibly two in the back of the building, then two in the front. But if you're gonna be in the back of the building, you can't be going in and out of the trailers in the middle of the night, which, we don't do that anyways. But, but again, I can see the concerns about them being in the back of the building as well because you can really, you can see all the houses and everything.
Right.
So, I think the landlord would be okay with me putting them in the front if I have a conversation with him, if the town approves it. That's, again, that's where we had them last year, and I did not have any issues at all. My team actually does, like, hourly walks through there and drives through there. So, we keep a pretty close eye on it, and I have a really good relationship with the chief that I've built over the time. So, he actually has patrol cars and everything go through there for me.
So, I have a question, but I don't know who would respond to this. If, if you're parking the trailers on previously designated parking spaces, did they have to have a specific number of parking spaces for the size of the building?
Of course.
Because you're taking out twenty-plus spaces?
I'm not sure what their parking calculations are.
There is a lot of parking on site, though.
Yes.
There is. I just didn't know what the, I just didn't know they had a requirement for the size of the.
I'd say they're exceeding it.
They've exceeded four.
Are there any handicap spaces down at that end?
Pretty far, pretty well.
Yeah.
What do you think?
I know this map's not to scale, but I'm, I'm not sure if you could fit the trailers on the back of the property where the.
I don't think you can put it in the back. I think it blocks the drive. But they do own, I'm wondering if they own, I don't know, the land next to it, but.
So, I measured the back of the building, and there's a ramp. You probably have seen it. There's a ramp right out back where we bring the pallets up and down. I can park two trailers, like, butt up against each other, right up against that ramp. There's enough room for the trucks and everything to come through. But again, that's only gonna be enough for two trailers in the back. And then, again, the. And then, again, the neighbors behind would be seeing those trailers.
The closer they are to the-
I think the concern is making it less intrusive for us.
I'm fine with it as long as it doesn't affect any parking.
There's no problems last year, I'm all with it.
Is there any way to keep the trailers secured from, uh, unwanted guests like you said?
Oh yeah, we keep them locked and we put, um, they're on camera at all times. I'm pretty good at keeping the unwanted guests out of my building, so, and out of my parking lot. I don't want it just as much as anybody else.
Any other questions from the board at this time?
I have none.
How would the board like to proceed? Would you like to discuss or?
I mean, it seems like there's enough parking, so I guess I'd make a motion to approve.
We'd have to clo- close the hearing first, right?
Yeah, make a motion to close.
Okay, motion to close made by Ed. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Bob. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And how would we like to proceed from here?
Do I make a motion to approve?
Second.
Okay, motion approved by Bob, second by Ed. Findings?
Uh, meets two forty, one sixty A. Storage for four forty-foot storage trailers only. Uh, location of trailers per map submitted?
There's no problems last year?
Well, there was in placement, but now we've got a map. Can they, um, I, I wonder if we should condition this to they check back in a year? To see if there's any issues.
Don't they come every year?
I think it's an annual permit anyway.
Well, we've had, is it, is this just annual?
Yeah.
It's a temporary permit. Alright, temporary conditional.
It's got a period of time on it, doesn't it?
Okay, so then-
For a one-year period.
So then the condition would just be for, uh, that location and for the four trailers only.
Yeah.
Any other findings or conditions I should ask?
Uh, you know, maybe we'll put a finding that, uh, landlord preferred rear building, but it's closer to the residential neighborhood? And this is a better location for butters?
Should include the, uh, the hours of operation and manager working with the teams of sighting and sighting the, of the trailers.
Hmm.
Anything else?
I guess the one other finding important is that they need this additional storage to support some of their community, uh, activities that are beneficial to the town.
That's a good finding. Anything else? Okay, so motion approved was made by Bob and second by Ed. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Let me pass the rose down.
Thank you.
Yeah. Oh, there you go. Twenty-six Albott lines.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, up next we have application forty-four dash nineteen, Rose Lansky, twenty-six Albatross Street in Woods Hole.
So being all persons deemed affected by the Board of Appeals under section eleven of chapter forty-eight of the Mass General Laws, you are hereby notified that William F. Rose Lansky of Woods Hole, Mass has applied to the zoning Board of Appeals for a special permit pursuant to sections two forty dash three C of the Code of Falmouth to construct in addition to the second floor, increasing habitable space on subject property known as twenty-six Albatross Street, Woods Hole, Mass. Uh, engineering, uh, general comments about runoff, uh, recommend, uh, stormwater measures to keep it on property and not to go into the butters or private rights of way. Assessors, no comment. Fire department, no comment. Planning, no comment. Health, uh, Amy Lowell wrote, looks like they are just increasing the size of the existing rooms, so there's no wastewater division comment. And it is on sewer. That's all we got.
Okay, for the applicant tonight?
Um, my name's, uh, Bill Rose Lansky. I'm an architect and it's my house, how about that? Um, I had a little trouble getting the, uh, PDFs to work here and I wanna hand out a couple more pictures, 'cause I added one window since, uh, the application.
Then head to to Bob, he can- Thank you.
Okay.
I have some full big ones to take up here.
Thank you.
So... That is my site. And these are my ne- This is why I'm here. The lot's under twenty thousand square feet. And this is the lot in question. That's my house. This, uh, setback over here is two point eight seven feet. It's about that big. It's kinda close. And I'm too close to the street, or about that far from the street. It's seven point five feet. So I'm not gonna get any, I'm building right on top of, of the existing. There's a one-story piece right here and I'm gonna put a second stair or a story right on top of it, hangs over the, this, it's been by two feet, so I'm not getting any closer to lot lines. I am gonna try to find my picture. Sorry. So the existing house, there's a little one-story piece like that, that's existing. And what I'm gonna do is stretch that roof line to the back across this one-story piece. And just expand that little bedroom up there across that roof. And so this is what it's gonna look like. Here it is stretched out, sitting on top of the first story. There's actually enough room to walk on both sides of the bed now, which would be pretty thrilling. And, um, the only thing I added in that picture I just handed out is a window in the middle here. And on the back side of the roof, where it's just a plain roof, and, um, in this picture, I added a skylight, so there's gonna be some cross ventilation in the, in the, in the roof. So on the back roof, which is just real plain looking like that, just blank in that picture, I just put, put a skylight right in there. So... And that shows on that little picture that you have. I will scroll back up to page one. There won't be any change at the front of the house. The, uh, picture window I, that I add, wanna add here, is just like these picture windows around the first floor of the house facing the street, so it'll look like it all belongs in the same house. Um, same number of bedrooms. The, um, curiously, this little lot is in a public use zone, so my lot coverage is allowed to be forty percent. Right now, it's about thirty point seven percent by structure. And it's gonna be proposed to be thirty-one percent by structure and by right, I'm allowed to have forty percent by structure. So, that's it.
Okay. Any other questions? Uh, Mary, do you wanna start us off?
Yeah, I have a question. Um, I, am I not seeing gutters?
Not on this picture, but I'm planning to put gutters on, on the, the back edge and on this edge here.
Thank you.
I'm probably gonna do the copper things that hang out free.
Okay, anything else, Mary?
That's it.
Bob?
Uh, so just to, uh, just to confirm, so it is four bedrooms total?
Yes.
And, um, in, in the height, the twenty-three foot height, that's just matching the current roof line?
Yes.
And then my only question, uh, off of Mary, on the gutters, is, um, would you be doing drywells? Or just, you said gutters free, so did you mean they would just go onto the ground or drywells or?
Probably just let them pour out on the ground.
And other, other, is there any other, anything else in the building for stormwater runoff right now, the rest of the building?
No. It's not a very big house. There's not a lot of water coming off the roof.
Uh, that's all I had. Uh, just a comment, just so you know though, the, um, the assessments department for some reason still has it as a two-family. So their assessments are still showing two kitchens and everything else, so you just, you might wanna just update with, them with that at some point.
Okay.
Ed, any questions?
No questions.
Ken?
No.
James? Okay. And I don't have any questions myself. Everything was already taken care of. Any members of the public have any questions, comments, concerns regarding this project? Anyone out there at all? Seeing none, back to the board.
I move to close.
Second.
Moved to close by Ken, second by Bob. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And how would we like to proceed?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion approved by Bob and second by Ed. Findings?
Uh, home currently has four bedrooms. Will be staying as four bedrooms. It's on, since it's on sewer. The, uh, height of the new addition at twenty-three feet will match the current ridge. Property's located in a public use district, so it, the coverage of thirty-one percent, it's well within, uh, lot coverage. Needs two forty dash three C, two forty dash two sixteen. Not substantially more detrimental, increases utilization.
No increase in non-conformity.
Yeah, no increase in non-conformity. Currently, you've got a six point two one setback from the street and two point eight seven setback from the sideline.
Any, any, anything else for findings?
That's it.
Alright, conditions?
Uh, per plans. I would wanna condition it with the engineering stormwater comments.
I suppose for findings, he was amenable to, uh, proposing gutters and-
Well, he's putting gutters, but I, but I think they're gonna need something for the roof runoff.
Sure. A follow-up with, uh-
Engineering.
Engineering regarding any runoff. Anything else for conditions?
No, I think that's it.
Hmm. No more than four beds?
Yeah, they are, they are limited by the, they're limited by the sewer.
Cause it's, it's capped by sewer. Okay, motion approved was made by Bob and second by Ed. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you very much. Does that include the revision to eight fourteen that I just gave you?
Sure. It'll, it'll be, uh, per revised plans, I guess.
Do you want full-size ones?
Actually, why don't you, yeah, why don't you give me one of those now, are you gonna?
Full-size.
Okay, up next we have application forty-five dash nineteen, Mandelbaum, sixty, Ostrom Road in Wacoit.
So application number forty-five dash nineteen, being all persons deemed affected by the Board of Appeals under section eleven of chapter forty-eight of the Mass General Laws, you are hereby notified that Bernice Z. and Jack Mandelbaum of Southbauer, Mass, has applied to the zoning Board of Appeals for a special permit pursuant to section two forty dash three C and two forty dash sixty-eight A eight of the Code of Falmouth to construct a detached garage and front yard more than fifty feet from front property line on subject property known as sixty, Ostrom Road, Wacoit, Mass.
Just a sec to bring up this PDF here, the site plan.
Engineering, uh, the general stormwater comments. Assessors, no comment. Fire department, no comment. Planning, no comment. Water not applicable.
Okay, whenever you're ready.
Good evening. Uh, my name's Mike Rockwell. I am the designer and hopefully builder of this project. Um, what we'd like to do is construct a twenty-four by twenty-six foot two-car garage, um, on the Mandelbaum property. Um, on the site plan, I'm gonna show up on the screen. But basically you can see here's Ostrom Road here, which is where we'd like to locate the garage. Um, the area between Ostrom and the garage is vegetated. There's both, uh, low brush and, uh, floating trees. Uh, distances, I'm a hundred and ten feet back from Ostrom. Um, I am forty-five feet back from their neighbors to the west and fifty-five feet from their neighbors to the east. And I'm happy to answer any other question you may have.
Okay. James, you have any questions?
The map with the, uh, showing other existing structures of the neighbors?
I do not.
Anything else? No. Ken?
Uh, is this structure heeded?
No.
Okay. And is there any storage a, above, or is it just?
No, we're gonna build it out of trusses, so yeah, we won't be able to put any weight in the attic.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, simply two-car garage.
Thank you.
Alright, Ed?
No, pretty straightforward. I don't have any questions.
Bob, anything?
No questions.
Mary?
No.
Alright. And no questions from me either. Uh, any members of the public have any questions, comments, concerns regarding this project? Anyone at all? Seeing none, back to the board.
Move to close.
Second.
Moved to close by Ken and second by Ed. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright. Be the pleasure of the board.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion approved by Bob and second by Ed. Findings?
Uh, let's see, uh, two-car garage. No heat. Hundred and ten feet from front line, forty-five and fifty-five from sides. Hundred and fourteen feet from the existing home. They're doing truss construction, so they won't be using it for storage. I think that's it.
Alright. Conditions?
Two forty-two sixteen, maybe you wanna say.
Yeah, two forty-two sixteen, two forty-three C.
And this is-
Two forty-sixty-eight A eights.
Sixty, yeah, okay.
Uh, two-car garage only. Per plans. Uh, and then the, uh, engineering stormwater comments.
Alright, anything else? Okay, so that was a motion approved, uh, made by Bob and second by Ed. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Excellent, thank you.
You're welcome.
About as straightforward as it gets. Looking pleasant. Perfect, get a little more. Alright, so far, so...
Okay, so that takes care of the new hearings. Onto the continuation scheduled for tonight. We have application twenty-nine dash nineteen, Swain, twenty-six Vibers Lane in the east Falmouth. Oh, sorry, could pass those back, I could be handed out to only ones.
I think that's the this must've been slipped along.
The Viber Lane.
All right. Yeah.
Oh, those lovely. Sorry about that. And have we opened this?
Yes.
We have, okay.
They're gonna give us information on the bedrooms and the front house.
Oh, that's right, okay, and for the applicants tonight?
How's it going, Nathan Swain, one forty-nine Percival Road. Um I'm here representing my parents at twenty-six Viber Lane, he's Falmouth. Um last meeting, we talked about the bedrooms upstairs, um I provided a picture, we just eliminated the uh staircase to get up there. So it's no question, it's just gonna be uh finished attic space. I did talk with Rod, I don't know if he uh did he ever provide a letter to you guys, I asked him, I checked with him today, but he was out.
Anything in the file book?
No, we have nothing from Rod, no.
Yeah. Property card does state it's a two-bedroom.
All right, anything else?
I think that's pretty much.
All right, so Bob, I hate to put you on the spot, but do we have any uh Ken indicated to me that he might not have been here for the last meeting, so I don't know if we have a tally of who was here versus who wasn't. [laughing] Sorry, we can do board questions and then
There you go.
figure it out. Uh Mary, any questions?
Yeah, I did have a question. Um on the plan that we just received, on the proposed um it looked like you were eliminating a door on the front right side.
On the um yeah, the garage? Which um which uh picture are you referring to?
I guess my question is, are you? Are you eliminating on the accessory?
Yeah, we're gonna eliminate the garage door and then that small door to the right. We are gonna eliminate that.
So how many doors do you have?
So there'll be one on the front and uh one on the back.
There is one in the back and one in the front?
Well, there will be.
Yeah.
Good answer.
Yeah, there isn't one on the
Yeah.
on the submission submitted plan. Okay.
Any other questions, Mary?
A- and then just to clarify, how many bedrooms are now being proposed?
Three.
Okay, thank you, that's it.
Ed, any questions?
No, I don't have any.
Ken? James?
Nope.
Okay. Bob, do you have any questions?
No questions, but um I don't have the minutes from the last one, so I don't know if Ken's attendance or not.
It's okay, we could uh might be able to make a solution to that. Uh any members of the public have any questions, comments, concerns regarding this project? Anyone at all? Seeing none, back to the board. Noreen, would it be possible if uh we're questioning Ken's status during the first meeting, can I appoint Mary and James since we're also down another member?
Yeah. Absolutely.
Fantastic, so I think that's what we'll do. Uh so we'll appoint both Mary and James out of an abundance of caution, where we have out of voting numbers. And how would the board like to proceed? Well first, I guess have we have we heard all the information that we need?
Yeah, I think we have everything, so motion to close.
Okay.
Second, second.
Motion to close by Bob and then second by James. And how would we like to proceed?
So where this is an accessory apartment, could we ask the administrator to draft a positive motion that we would vote on at next? Just because the amount of findings and conditions on the apartment
Sure, I think we
extensive.
I think we can do that.
So then I would make a motion to um to have the administrator draft a uh positive decision on this, that we could vote uh at the next meeting?
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Give that to uh Ed this time. And do we wanna lean lean her in the right direction by giving her some findings, or?
Yeah, so on the findings, there was a um there was a determination on the front house that it's a two-bedroom. Which uh allowed that they didn't have to do a de-nactifying system. Uh meets um two forty thirty-eight I.
So you're gonna have a total of three bedrooms on the property?
Three bedroom total on the property. Yeah, that was in the uh
Yes.
So I left it uh install a new water service. Or a well. Let's see if there's any engineering comments. So there's a list of engineering comments, so we should um add those to the conditions. And they did get planning board approval.
Anything else?
Well, I think that's it to start, 'cause we can always change it as the draft if we have to add.
Ken? All right, so that was a motion uh to direct Noreen to draft a favorable decision regarding the project that was made by Bob and second by Ed. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay.
Alright, thanks.
Okay, up next we have the continuation of application thirteen dash nineteen, Hackler, Eight Solar Way in Hatchville.
There is a uh notation in the file just from um Jeffrey Openheim that they are no longer doing the representation.
Okay.
And uh I am not uh standing. I don't know how to find the presentation on the, didn't have to find the presentation on the uh
Okay, so you're gonna click here. And then you're then you would speed drive right here. Do you have a lot on this?
Sorry?
Do you have a lot on this?
On it?
On the thing.
Not a whole lot. Presentation's like
It says it's not responding.
Okay.
And then you can just click and
Yeah.
Uh good evening, my name is Joe Hackler and I'm I'm back before you here again tonight regarding Eight Solar Way. Um this is a project that we've been working with for some time and um have run into some zoning issues. Um The project, our cohousing community developed this site years ago, back in nineteen ninety-one, we we acquired the site and um Karen and I had always planned to build a home on what was then Lot Four, which is now Eight Solar Way. And um at that time, the di- the group had difficulty obtaining financing for the subdivision. And so at that time, we chose to move into the farmhouse and the um the money available from the fa- farmhouse was used to basically buy the infrastructure for the site. Our initial plans were to build onto Lot Four. Um years ago past, we raise a family and I'm working for a solar firm doing permitting and uh primary permitting for solar installation such as this, and this is a a barn for Eva's Garden in South Dartmouth that uh I designed and that was built, it's a solar pole barn. And I got excited about this particular type of prospect and thought, oh, maybe this would be a good idea for Lot Four. To um I you know, twenty-five years had gone by, um and the land was vacant and um so I proposed that idea to the group and um the structure was pretty big, it was a big structure. It's it really was too big for the site. But at that time, I had gone ahead and applied for the interconnection permit through Eversource because that's a long lead time issue, and it was a twenty-five kilowatt system, which put it into a different sort of permitting category with Eversource, which sort of um is important later. Um so I reduced the size of the pole barn by more than two. And uh we we have animals, we raise animals, um Karen runs a a four-H and um has kids over learning about animals um on on almost weekly basis. And this pole barn is really uh quite a rough structure, really a barn structure, board and batten siding. Um in inexpensive to construct. And that was exciting to us at the time. And um I we presented it to our cohousing community, our association, and um it was ultimately approved, it took a while for it to get approved. Um and they basically said, look, if you're gonna do this, we wanna make sure that you can also build a house on the site. So they made me demonstrate that not only could the pole barn be put there, but that the a bedroom, like a three-bedroom house could go there along with the the attendant sec system. So I I was inquiring about how to get this permitted because there's no principal structure on the site. And so the the house wasn't there yet, and this is an accessory use, you're not allowed to have an accessory use until the principal structure is there. And this was back when Aladi Ogoh was here, and he was like, except unless it's for agriculture. I was like, oh great, this is a barn for our animals. And by the zoning code, you can do that, and Rod Palmer was not convinced. And so he said, well, I'm gonna need to have some attorney write something that convinces me. And ultimately, that did happen, and he became convinced enough to issue me a permit for the the barn. Um it's agricultural A zoning, and I at that time had forgotten about the cluster subdivision. It's twenty years ago, I'd forgotten about the cluster subdivision, and it turns out that even though it was technically approvable under agricultural A zoning, it's runs into issues when it comes under the what they call the planned residential development part of the zoning bylaws. And so agricultural, horticulture, and similar uses are are permitted except for according to Massachusetts General Law sixty-one A, which actually is really quite specific and requires five acres, and this is a quarter acre lot, so it was not approvable. But it had I had applied and built a structure and um I took too long to complete the structure. And my neighbors became angry. And they complained to the town, and uh Rod Pa- Palmer in um made an enforcement edict and the uh said that I should tear it down. Um but prior to that, um he was like, you gotta come into compliance with the permit that I issued. You gotta demonstrate that there's uh agricultural activity there, and this is the middle of the winter and I made a strawbale house and um and I get a call, I'm working on the vineyard, and I get a call saying, oh, Rod's coming over today to inspect your pole barn, and I didn't I didn't have time to move the goats over into the little shed that I put underneath. And he determined that I didn't have agricultural activity on site. Um and when I got called in the office at one point in time, uh the zoning administrator's assistant insisted that I my electrical permit inspection had failed. And I knew this not to be the case, because I was the one that was dealing with all the permitting for this system, and I had obtained all the uh all the inspections and then given them to Eversource, and not only that, but because of the permitting through Eversource, the electrical inspector had to call into Eversource because of the size of the system, in addition to this, to confirm that uh the project passed. So this was weird to me, I was this this freaked me out. Um and then also, it says in his enforcement order, he said that you uh there's you depict solar panels, stored as solar panels. Now this is the order for me to tear down the building, and I work for a solar company, and I know that solar panels are when they're stored, they're on pallets, and ten thun- tens of thousands of dollars later are they installed solar system. And I was like, this is really weird that an enforcement order would make an mistake like this. And so I go to Rod Palmer and I was like, how can I fix this, and he was like, well, y- you could maybe apply for to convert it into a residential structure. And so that's what I've been doing, since then, I've been making plans to convert our house into a residential structure. And um he the the plans are here, and I it turns out that I was actually issued a building permit for the enclosure system. And uh the problem is, is when I made the building permit application, uh this is a a pretty sad set of plans actually, with with lots of no dimensions and no structural details, and at that time, um one of the building inspectors called me in and said, I need structural engineering support, I can't approve this. But I go back and look at it now, and it turns out that it was approved. I was never informed that this permit I was never informed that this permit was approved. And so this is another very weird thing. So I'm trying to come into conformance with two things, I'm trying to come into conformance with my own association's covenants, which state explicitly that it needs to be a residential use on that site. And I'm trying to come into conformance with the town's zoning bylaws with respect to the cluster subdivision that says it has to be a residential structure as well. So I've been working on plans to turn this into a residential structure. These are taking me time and uh people are bothered by that. Um the last time I came here, I was ready to present some plans for a studio apartment that I've been designing. And there's just, you know, a couple pictures of this little thing and how it fits into the site. And some structural details about what I was after. And these I sent along to the structural engineer and he suggested suggested this ready structure that integrated existing poles and other things. And um at the last meeting, uh my neighbors were like, he's never gonna build this thing. He's he can't afford to build this thing, you gotta go talk to the bank, you you were like ta- telling me to go talk to the bank. And I I went and talked to some bankers and it turns out that I can't build the studio apartment because it would be considered to be an investment property. And the only way for us to get financing for a construction loan is to have this new property be our primary residence. So we're back to nineteen ninety six where this would become our primary residence. So I'm back to the drawing board forty five days ago. Now converting not only the upstairs to a residence, but the downstairs as well. So I added a stairwell and we have it's now a two bedroom house and these are the plans that I put together. Cute little studio upstairs, little kitchen, ba- bedroom downstairs, bathroom. And um little structural work. Landscaped designer said you really need to have a nicer deck on the damn thing. And um as of today, I finally got um the civil drawing from the civil engineer that shows the that shows the site. And I also have the structural engineer engaged with the work, thank goodness, because if I don't have structural engineering, I don't have a project. And so this is my prop my uh progress to date. I don't have a full building permit completed and applied for yet. I don't have financing, I don't have a loan. Um I'm I'm working as hard as I can to come into compliance. And um there you have it.
Okay, thank you. And just in the event if we do vote on this tonight, uh one of our members is absent, so I would be appointing James as a voting member on this. Um Not to put you on the spot, James, but do you wanna start us off with any questions, if you do have any?
Oh, this time.
Okay, Ken.
So currently you're living in another house.
Yeah, the old farmhouse up at the site.
And if you did move into this, what would the become of that?
I think we might rent it out, maybe we'll sell it, it sort of depends on what we can afford to do. Something.
But that's on a separate lot.
It's it each of these, yeah, there are every house is on a separate lot.
So I'm just a little confused because if that if that was could become a rental property
Mm-hmm.
and this was your primary residence, but on the other hand, you said you couldn't do this as an investment property because that's because of the financing would be required for you to complete this.
Right.
You feel you could get financing as primary, but not as a investment?
According to the three people that I talked to who that do construction loans, the the underwriters, you can have a second home and you can finance a second home, but your second home can't be in Falmouth, your second home has to be far away for it to be to be considered a second home. And it's it's the underwriter that makes the decision and so, I mean, Karen and I would be thrilled to live in a new house and on that part of the site because that's what we always intend to do and it's a gorgeous place. And um yeah, it'd be lovely to do that. And so I I don't have control over financing arrangements and what underwriters think. But th- this is my response to, you know, learning that information.
Okay.
Ken, any questions?
Do you have a schedule for what you think you can accomplish in the next to get to the point of starting construction?
I have a lot of work to do. Um
I heard that before.
Once once I receive a building permit, then I can move along with a schedule because then I can cost the thing out and see if financing is obtainable. It's really possible that the underwriter would say, that's too small of a house and I won't finance it. Because they, you know, they're the ones that determine what's bankable. Um Yeah, this could, I mean, this house could, if I get financing, this house could get go right along, I could just I have a builder that's interested in doing it. And so um I'd be lying if I said I really knew how long it would take.
So ha- have you have you filled out any financing application at all?
I did a couple of online things. By having I've been so flat out just getting these plans together that I really have not had time to deal with the financing, you know, getting down and grass tacked with financing.
Because the other issue you may run into on financing is that if you do try to turn this into a house, you're gonna look at a current structure that does not meet code or zoning.
Well, that's what the structural engineers
But they'll have to finance a violation structure to turn into a conforming structure. And that might be another issue that you're gonna have another big hurdle. If if this was a a blank site and you had taken this down, I think you'd have a lot easier time getting actual financing for a rebuild as a residence and then adding whatever features you're looking for.
So that would add a hundred dollars a square foot of cost to the new house? Because it it's takes this is a hundred thousand dollar sort of situation here.
But you may not be able to get financing with this structure up.
Maybe not with the financing I'm showing, it's possible that I can find an investor, I can start grovelling around to sisters and brothers for cosigners, that's true.
That that's all I have.
Mary?
I guess I'm a little confused. I thought this was an appeal of the building commissioner who said that you didn't construct what was approved.
That um the building commissioner in his uh enforcement letter requesting that I take it down, was responding to the permit that he'd issued.
Right, which was
Which was under which which is under the wrong part of the zoning code.
Well, I thought you were appealing the building commissioner's determination that the pole barn structure be removed because it it wasn't what you said you were going to build. It wasn't for agricultural purposes, it was um photovoltaic.
I'm appealing not having to tear it down. And I have learned that this pr- portion of the zoning code that the permit was issued under is not appropriate. Th- that part of the code doesn't apply to this situation, so I'm sort of, I'm not the zoning expert here, I don't actually know what to do in this situation. Because the controlling part of the zoning code doesn't permit the use that Rod permitted. The only way for me to come into conformance is con- convert the use to a a residential use. The only way for me to come into conformance with the group, I guess you can order me to tear it down but is to is to convert it to a residential use.
And Mary, and for the applicant as well, the building commissioner did give us a couple of options dur- during his testimony at the last hearings. Uh two options were either the applicant uh complete the project as permitted or that he converted into a dwelling. So just giving him two options there.
If if he were to do that, the last option, would he have to apply for a building permit?
I would say so. Any other questions, Mary?
So ch- can I just follow up on Mary's question?
Sure.
So there's two issues, one is our response to the immediate request to overturn the building commissioner. And it seems to me that we may not have grounds to do that. Obviously, the applicant's in a very difficult position and I think the I suspect at least most of the board is somewhat sympathetic. But it seems like he then needs to go back to the building commissioner with a remedy.
That was my point.
But that's not our decision at this point. That that
Correct.
I don't know, Noreen, what does that sound right to you?
Yeah, I think that's, you know, what's before you is that what was constructed did not comport with the permitting. And the building commissioner found that it didn't comport with an agricultural use as is.
So to that point, I can run up and move animals into that little shed and be in compliance. In twenty minutes, I can send Karen some pictures and I can be in compliance with the permit as issued. If the the structure's not finished, it's not complete. But it will be technically an agricultural use. I
But even if that was done, it's not an accessory to a residential use on the lot. So it still wouldn't meet
No, no, actually, under the under the agricultural A zoning
So on the subdivision So on the subdivision plan for this subdivision, it said that each lot would have a residence. And then you could have an accessory use to your residence. This lot has no residence.
And that was the attorney's argument to Rod Palmer and it is in fact, according to my understanding, legal to have an accessory use if it's agriculturally based under zoning agricultural aid, typical zoning. In our cluster subdivision zoning, which this permit was not approved under, it's not.
So you'd still be in violation of your cluster approval?
That's not
I I I understand what you're trying to do and I feel for what you're trying to do and I know that you probably didn't mean this to go the way it's going.
I thought I was conforming the whole time, I got all the proper permits.
But it but if you know at this point that you need a residence and the 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 only reason I think we gave the original extension was to give you the extra time to actually obtain financing and that's what the uh even the attorney said, just give us
I don't understand how financing can be purviewed at this board. It's not even it's not even in the purview of our own neighborhood covenants.
Financing to sense that you could do a residence there. That you had the means to change it to a residence. And you understood that at the last meeting because it was very clear when we extended.
And I did ex
And and I understand you've tried and and I and I in the plans, I can see all the work that you put into it and the plans and trying to change it, but you know, I know we have to do public comment, but at this point, we have to focus on the fact that the building commissioner, he's appealed the fact to take it down. We have to make a decision if he should take it down or not. The neighborhood at the last meeting stated they were willing to give him the thirty days to give him another shot. But there comes a point where you just can't extend, 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 extend. I still have concerns of other issues with the structure. Um and I think it's gonna be very hard to turn this directly into a residence where if this wasn't here, you could rebuild a residence. Um maybe exactly what you want, but I I think we're running in circles.
All right, so let's uh if the board's all set with questions for right now, we can turn it to public comment. Does anyone have any questions, comments, concerns regarding this project? It's the second time we've had this on, so I'd just ask that. If you do have any questions, comments, concerns, it'd be something new, something to add to the conversation. Ma'am?
Hilda Mengate, Twenty Eighth Common Way, I'm one of the neighbors. Um one of the suggestions that Rod Palmer made last time was that it could be an accessory building and a residential building next to it. However, this building is too tall for that, it's three feet too tall. So that existing structure cannot be made into accessory building and a resident in front.
Thank you. Anyone else have any questions, comments, concerns regarding this project? Seeing none, back to the board. I know we did have a little bit of board discussion, but do you wanna perhaps continue having board discussion?
I I just think that it doesn't meet anything at this point.
Well, I mean, at this point, you might be right, but
And it's been
In ag district, this is an ag district, agriculture is a permitted principal use and that's a could be fairly broadly interpreted, I mean, it is
But not allowed in their subdivision.
That's not a zoning issue for us, that's a private property rights issue, right?
Well, it's part of the town permit for the subdivision. The planning board. When they okayed the subdivision
Yeah.
I I would
It's a very new um
Right, but I'm just, you know, right now we just have, as Mary pointed out, we just have the question of the appeal of the building commissioner's determination that needs to be torn down because it doesn't conform to what was originally proposed. And he apparently permitted an agricultural use.
I I would say that it's a solar array and that that's it's that and not an agricultural structure.
Right. But if you built a barn and you put solar panels on it, you actually used it for
But that isn't
some agricultural purpose, then it would not just be a solar array.
Absolutely, but that wasn't the purpose of this, this power was going to other places.
I think even the public comment we had tonight, if you wanted to try to change this into a residence, which I think would be better for the community using what's currently there as this structure and turning it into a residence is a lot more complicated than just starting from scratch. I mean, you you've even got a situation here where the they put in a retaining wall that's collapsing. It isn't even installed correctly. There isn't enough support. Um I'm I'm still scared to death about the electrical out there. It it just it was not a good situation, you've got open fields and air and um I I know that this isn't what he meant to do and he probably didn't realize and he seems to have, you know, very good thoughts about what's there. But I I just don't see how you can't uphold the commissioners that it must be removed and then if he decides to redo something else or do a residence or meet with the community, maybe come up with a different plan. It would also be a lot easier for them to get financing and actually put something through that I think everyone might be happy with that's that's living out there, but you know, the neighborhood right now has been living under this for months and months and months.
Sir, if if you wanna speak, you can come up to the podium.
Yeah, I I I did I did drive the site, so I've been there multiple times just to make sure in different angles and if 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 somebody is next to you, that isn't what it looks like. It is from a di- nope, if I went way in the distance and took a photo. Um but i- i- it's a very well placed photo, but it just that's just not what it looks like when you're out there.
Let's get on, I'll look at the date of the, uh, letter from, uh-
February sixth.
Yes.
February sixth. It's almost six months.
Yeah. Well, that's what I mean, six months, and then I think we did try to give the extension, hoping that something would miraculously appear, but I personally, I, I, I would not be in favor of, of keeping it up at this point. I just think it is too many problems.
I tend to agree with you. Um, uh, and I just go back to the building commissioner's testimony, the last hearing. He stated that it was permitted as a agricultural pole barn for farm animals. And what he saw when he did his, conducted his site visit, it was beyond the scope of the permit. Uh, he observed the incomplete structure, uh, with the solar panels, the net metering, and no farm animals imposed on the structure.
I mean, we even had testimony that a portion of electricity was going to the Kuna Mesut Farm, which isn't part of the subdivision.
Right. James, do you care to weigh in since, uh, you might be a voting member tonight if we close and vote?
I share the concerns of Mary, Bob, also that it just seems that, after her testimony, that he was going to come back and move animals when the, the scheduled inspection, and then tonight, that, oh, I can move animals right now to come into compliance. It just seems that it's not being used primarily for agriculture, and it's just looking for a way to kind of get around or pigeonhole something in. I, I'm, I'm applying to uphold the building inspector's determination.
Okay. I think it's, I think it's unanimous. We would have to close the hearing and then vote on it.
So, mo- so, motion to close?
Aye. Motion to close by Bob and second by Ed. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And-
So, then I would, I'd make a motion to, um, to deny the appeal and to uphold the building commissioner's determination that the structure be removed.
Your motion was made by Bob. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ed. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 And I guess I have to agree.
So, unanimous then?
Yeah.
All right. And we'll take a five-minute break. Was an issue, uh, that we did reach out to them and ask them to, uh, review. And, uh, I've been asked at least to read into the record town, uh, council's opinion. And it states, uh, that Connors v. Anino, which is four sixty Mass., seven ninety, uh, this was in two thousand eleven. Uh, that case bars the use of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter forty-eight, Section seven enforcement remedy only where the aggrieved party had adequate notice of the building permit's issuance in time to challenge it within thirty days from the date of issuance as required by MGL, uh, forty-eight, Section fifteen. It states that the burden is on the aggrieved party to demonstrate the lack of adequate notice for a building permit issued on December twenty-seventh, two thousand eighteen. The thirty-day period for filing an appeal of that decision expired on January twenty-sixth, two thousand nineteen. Uh, the property owner's argument that the petitioner had actual knowledge in the beginning of February two thousand nineteen does not require a finding that the petitioner had adequate notice in time to challenge the building permit decision by January twenty-sixth, two thousand nineteen, and thus does not require dismissal of the appeal. Uh, Connors, uh, which is the case I cited at the beginning, uh, does not stand for the proposition that the petitioner would have been able to file an appeal of the building permit within thirty days of first discovering its existence in February two thousand nineteen. In such circumstances, the alternative remedy of enforcement under MGL, uh, forty-eight, Section seven would still be available and is not subject to any requirement that the request be filed within thirty days of becoming aware of the violation. So, with that having been said, has everyone had a chance to review the memorandum and-
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. And, uh, that having been said, I don't know if town council needs to weigh in any further, or-
Mr. Harry, members of the board, um, you posed a question to us, and we answered it. Um, for the benefit of the public, we gave you this statement to read, which is the summary of the opinion. Um, and we're here, uh, at your request tonight.
Appreciate it. Thank you. And does the board have any questions for the petitioner, which would be Ed Van Kuren?
Uh, not at this time.
Ed, I do have a question. If you could take the podium, please. And I know, I know that you've submitted a number of paperwork to the file, and you've all had a chance to review that. When did you become aware of the building permit itself, or did you?
When I, when they started, uh, digging the foundation. I don't know the exact date.
And-
But it was the latter, latter part of Jul- of January.
And that's the, the actual building permit itself, not just the activity happening on the land?
No, no, I just was aware of the, uh, activity on the site.
And how about the actual building permit itself? Do, do you recall when you became aware of that?
Uh, it was probably around the first of, first of February. I think that was on a Friday. I be- I only became aware of it because I went to the zoning office, and, uh, the young lady there, she, uh, looked it up and said, gave me the date. And I put that in the notes that I gave to Rod Palmer on the fourth of, Monday, the fourth of February, uh, one thirty in the afternoon.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Van Kuren?
No questions. Well, so, so just to clarify, so there was, you made a written request to the building commissioner on the fourth of February?
And that's in the file.
Yeah.
It contained the permit, the, the hearing, the decisions made by the zoning board for a special permit, and- and then again, they came, the, the builder back then came back and wanted a variance, and that was also denied after, it was also denied by the, sometime earlier, by the planning board.
Anything else, Ken?
No, that's it.
All right. Any other questions for Mr. Van Kuren?
No.
All right. Attorney Summer, I, I don't know if you care to weigh in?
Sure. So, uh, I'll just summarize, I guess, what I said at the end of, uh, the hearing last time, which was, um, essentially building on, uh, what Frank, Mr. Duffy said regarding the Connors case. The issue at hand here is, um, the appellant got notice, he said, of construction in January, and then he knew of the permit being issued in February. Under case law, Connors in particular, it stands for the proposition that once, um, an aggrieved party has notice of the building permit, they have thirty days to file a formal appeal. It also stands for the proposition, the proposition that if they have notice of the permit, they can't use Section seven to say that there was, to sit on their right of appeal, um, for lack of an enforcement action. Because the court has said, um, that it would make no sense to allow an aggrieved person armed with the note, uh, the knowledge of a zoning violation to sit on his or her rights while the recipient of the permit incurs substantial expense by undertaking authorized construction only to have the aggrieved person spring into action sometime in the next six years and demand enforcement of a zoning restriction. So, we understand that Mr. Van Kuren had made statements to Mr. Palmer. He did not make a formal appeal until May twenty-first. That is over ninety days after he had notice of the permit. That is the law. We have these rules so that one can move forward and rely once they give notice. In our case, as I explained last hearing, we learned of old case law that was twenty-five years old regarding the property that was not on title, that was not anywhere for me to see. We learned of that. As soon as I learned of that, I went to town council and discussed with him and with Rod Palmer if they were going to put a stop-work order on the property or pull the permit. Their answer was no. That they stood by the permit. My response was to notice a radius of a butters to foreclose this very thing from happening so that I could then advise my client, after the appeal period had run, that he could resume construction activity. So, it's our position that the board, that Mr. Van Kuren has no standing, and therefore, the board lacks jurisdiction to hear the appeal. Questions?
Any questions for Attorney Summer?
Uh, I just have one question. So, um, Mr. McCrone sent out a letter on March fourteenth. We have one copy here. I don't know if he sent it to the entire neighborhood, saying that he just received his building permit. So, when did he actually receive his building permit?
The letter was ju- just to inform everyone that he was building under the building permit.
Did, um, did Mr. McCrone fill out the building permit?
Yes.
And was Mr. McCrone the owner of the property at the time of filling out the permit?
Yes.
Can you tell me why he listed that the owner was Mike Moore?
I apologize. We were into, the, the purchase and sale agreement for the purchase of the property was contingent on him getting a building permit. That is why it was under the previous owner's name.
So, on the permit itself, um, he checked off that there was no ZBA decisions? And there was also, um, not an undersized lot of record?
There was none that we saw.
So, did Mr. McCrone ever check with the ZBA office?
Not to my knowledge.
Did you ever check with the ZBA office?
I did not.
Is there any reason that on the actual permit, there's no contact information for the owner listed, but just a just that address, Thirty-three Pheasant Lane? There's no address filled out for the owner? There's no telephone number filled out for the owner? There's no contact filled out from the owner?
It's my understanding that this is very, uh, this, this happens very often when, um, you're buying a property, uh, from someone, and that you need to dis- you need to know if it's a buildable lot, and there will be a building permit.
But usually, the owner actually also signs or gives-
I was not a part of that process.
That's all I have right now.
Okay.
Ken, I think you had a question?
Yeah, so, so, uh, the, you acknowledged that, um, Mr. Van Kuren submitted a written, uh, request to, on May twenty-first?
Yes.
When did the building commissioner provide a written response?
I think he spoke to him, but he's, he, he has, he responded by saying and by never issuing a cease and desist order. It's, the onus is on the appellant to appeal if-
How do you appeal something if there's no decision?
Because then we re-noticed him saying the building permit is happening, and that it's all about notice. And it's whether it's, he's out, by his own words, that he knew the building permit was issued in February, under case law.
Well, he knew that there was construction going on.
And he said in February that he knew that there was a permit. He needed to make a formal appeal.
Right, but then the building commissioner needs to respond.
In Connors, there is actually discussion about the fact that the building commissioner in that case was in discussion with the appellant. And I don't know that they got, again, I would have to go back and look, but it did not matter that he responded or not. It all goes back to the issuance, the, the, the time of the notice of the issuance of the building permit. And what I'm saying is the second part of Connors says, you can't get a second bite at the apple if you knew of the issuance of the building permit for a lack of enforcement action. You needed to have done it upfront, and he did not.
The question I've got for you, councilors, what constitutes sufficient notice to the building official? Is it a written complaint, a handwritten letter, or discussions? I guess that's, this is the part that I'm still-
My understanding is it has to be a formal appeal to the zoning board, not to the building commissioner. Maybe Mr. Duffy could speak to that.
Anything else? Bob, Mary, anything?
Not right now.
Uh, additionally, to have standing, one has to be an aggrieved party. They actually have to prove harm. And we haven't even begun a discussion of harm, because in my opinion, he's out in terms of the notice provision. But if we need to move on, then we can make, have a discussion of whether he is an aggrieved party under the law, because he suffered some harm, which I will argue he did not.
Good. Thank you, Attorney Summer. So I suppose the question is, how do we proceed from here? If we want to have a board discussion, or...
Well, I wonder if there's any further comment that town council wants to make on the, in response to the testimony we've heard from Attorney Summer.
Attorney Duffy, is there anything?
Well, I, if you have some specific questions, I'll try to answer those. Not, I can get back to you very promptly if I can't answer them, but the one thing I would like to say is that our review of the relevant case law is that the, the building permit here issued on the twenty-sixth of, or the twenty-seventh of, twenty-seventh of December. So that, there's a thirty-day period to appeal that building permit, but it closes at the end of thirty days, but the rule of Connor and Anino is that you have to have adequate notice of it to take advantage, or, or you're foreclosed at the end of thirty days. If you don't know about that building permit during the thirty-day period, you then have the option of seeking zoning enforcement after that. That's, that's our interpretation, and that is the sum and substance of the statement that Mr. Hurry read at the beginning of the meeting.
But if you then make a verbal, uh, complaint, that indicates some knowledge.
But a verbal, the statute requires a complaint in writing.
So the verbal complaint, on its own, doesn't trigger yet another thirty-day period?
No, it does not. It, and, uh, no, if you request in writing, there is a requirement that the building commissioner respond within fourteen days. But, uh, there's, there's no particular penalty for that, so...
Right. So if the building commissioner doesn't respond in fourteen days, then what?
It just drags on. It's not a constructive, it's not, it's no constructive decision if he does this.
But the appeal period is not triggered...
No.
Until what happens? What has to happen to...
Well, you, the building commis-, the appeal comes when the building commissioner responds, which in this case he has, just, but just recently.
And when did that response occur?
A couple of days ago, I think. It's on file with Noreen. Just, he, what the building commissioner said in his letter was that he's not going to take the enforcement action requested by Mr. Van Kuren for the reasons he gave you when he was here last time. That's all it says.
So how do we, we have an appeal before us, which apparently started before the response of the building commissioner.
That's correct. It's a very odd set of circumstances.
So now what?
Well, if Mr. Van Kuren could re-appeal, because now there's been a letter on file.
So there's a letter on file from the building commissioner dated August twentieth. Says, "Dear Mr. Van Kuren, I decline to issue a cease and desist order for the property of Thirty-three Pheasant Lane, Parcel forty eleven zero zero five zero one three. For the reasons I explained at the zoning board of appeals' last hearing on July eighteenth, two thousand nineteen." And that was just done on August twentieth. So it would appear if that was done on August twentieth, now somebody could put in an appeal as of the response date.
And they have thirty days from August twentieth?
They have thirty days from August twentieth.
I have a question. Is, is there a time limit on that?
The thirty days is from the issuance of the building permit, which is back last December.
But the trigger that you've just spoke about, which was the August twenty, twenty nineteen...
Since the building commissioner just gave a response now...
Is there a time limit for a re-appeal?
I'm, I'm not sure I know the answer to that, um, but...
That's fair.
In any event, it... Okay, yes, excuse me. I already just pointed out, it's thirty days, so...
Thank you.
There's twenty-eight days left.
Thank you very much.
So Mr. Van Kuren would have to resubmit an appeal, or just amend what... What's that process? Do you just resubmit an appeal?
I'm sure he could just re, just take what he submitted, change the date, file it, and that'd be enough.
I guess the only other question I have, and I, I don't know if this is necessarily an appropriate question for you, but typically, when building permits are issued on vacant lots, is it customary to look and see if there are existing decisions that have been either by the planning board or zoning board that have pertained to that lot?
I don't know if I can properly answer that, because I don't know the circumstances, uh, under which Mr. McCrone acquired this lot, or what his financing was, or whatever. The statement made by Ms. Summer, that you would not find the denials in the title to the property in the registry of deeds, is correct. You would not find them there. You would have to go beyond the registry of deeds and look through the files of the, uh, building department downstairs to determine if there had any, been any previous history to the property.
So these, this history should have existed within the building department?
It must have existed there. I, I personally have not looked, but it's, I will tell you, it is not in the registry of deeds.
I have an additional question. Would some of those documents have been found in land court records?
No. Well, let me just back up a minute. The, the appeals from the nineteen ninety-one and nineteen ninety-four denials are in the land court, but typically, nobody would bother to go up to Boston to look for them.
And they're not available online?
No.
Thank you.
At least to my knowledge, they're not.
So if somebody wanted to know if there was a ZBA decision on the property, would it be customary to check with the zoning board?
That's the only place you're gonna find it.
Except you said it might be in the building department.
Excuse me. The building department might have a record of it too, but it certainly would be in the record of the ZBA. And in fact, when Noreen looked for it, she found it.
Any other questions for Attorney Duffy?
At, at this time, I don't have any.
Can I make one final statement? I respectfully, uh, disagree, um, with, uh, a lot of what has been said before. Mr. Van Kuren has been provided notice, essentially, time and time again. We know that he got notice constructively, which, under the case law, counts, in January. He then had notice of the building permit. And he did not file a formal appeal. Under case law, an aggrieved party must do so, even in the most conservative of, of, of ways of looking at this. To protect my client, the reason we noticed all of the abutters was because we knew there might be an underlying issue. We knew the town didn't have an issue with the permit. They were standing behind it. So I wanted to make sure. There was nothing I could do to fix a twenty-five-year-old case that was three owners back. So, our decision was to discuss with the building commissioner and town council, "Are you going to put a cease and desist order?" The answer was no. "Are you gonna pull the permit?" No. So then I needed to deal with all the potential aggrieved parties, the abutters. We noticed them on March fourteenth. Mr. Van Kuren received notice again. If he were so concerned and knew the law, he needed to file an appeal. He needed to file an appeal at the beginning. He didn't. But even in the most conservative of terms, March fourteenth came and went, and then it's not until May twenty-first that he files an appeal. The case law exists for this very, this very situation. One can't sit on their rights and watch a building be constructed and not appeal and try to seek it through a different enforcement action. So I strongly disagree that Mr. Palmer's statement of two days ago creates a new appeal period. That is not in line with case law.
So you just stated that you sent the letter out on March fourteenth to put notice, yet I've asked at two different meetings now why the letter was sent out, and you stated, "Well, you didn't know. You thought he just might want to touch base with people in the neighborhood," or he stated that he was gonna be living there. So, what, is it, I mean, it says...
It's just a form letter. The reason for the letter...
You just said was to put on notice.
Yes, because I needed to make sure...
But you didn't say that when I asked before. I said, "Why was the letter sent out?" You didn't say that. Now you're saying you particularly did it to put him on notice because you knew there might be an issue.
I'd actually like to go back in, because I read through the timeline, and I, I specifically went back through in the previous hearing and went through the timeline of events, including when and why we sent out the letter.
But that's not what you stated. So you may want to go back and look, but you didn't state at the previous hearing when I asked about the letter that you did it to put people on notice. You didn't answer that a couple of minutes ago, and now you just said you did it to put people on notice because you knew there might be an issue. So was that the real reason to send out the letter, because you knew there might be an issue?
Absolutely.
And you're trying to cover. So, so, just so I know...
Yes.
That was the reason the letter?
Yes, and I do believe I did say that in a previous hearing.
It wasn't for Mr. McCrone to say that, "I'm just gonna be residing in the area and..."
You're not gonna pu-, you don't write a letter with a red flag saying, you know, "Because there might be issues." You write a letter stating, "We have a building permit. We are going to build."
Did you get a certified abutter list from the assessor's office to mail to?
Yes. I think we did. I have to go back and look. We did a whole radius check of the, a three-hundred-feet radius.
All right, but it was issued by the assessor's office?
It was taken from assessor's records. It was not issued by the assessor's office.
Anything else?
No. I just want, I'd like some clarification as to what was provided to Mr. Palmer in February. Was this an oral complaint? It was a question, or was some written notice provided to him about this particular lot?
That was back in February?
The February, yeah.
I think Mr. Van Kuren can speak to that.
I gave the building commissioner a piece of paper that had the list of the two, uh, decisions that were made. One for requests for a variance, and one for a special permit. And I gave him that, and I gave him the date of the, uh, that the building permit was advertised. And when I handed it to him, he looked at it and said, I don't remember his exact words, but... And I, the thought process was, did I screw up, I think in his head at the time, and issue a permit I shouldn't have, or did I do something that I shouldn't have done? I don't know what's in his head, and I don't have any way of doing that. So that's up for his supervisor to understand what he did. And I didn't get into that. And so then he had, when I gave it to him, he said, "Give me your phone number, and I'll get back to you after I look into it." And at the end of a week, he hadn't gotten back to me, so I went there the following Monday, on the eleventh of February, and I said, "What's happening?" Because after I left on the one-thirty on the fourth, within a few hours, they poured the footings. And then, the next thing I know, all the forms are gone, and the, everything was gone from the site. And then, on the, on the Sunday, which would have been the tenth, the trucks are back with the forms. And so I went back on Monday, on the, uh, on the eleventh of February, and I asked them what was happening. He said, "The zoning enforcement officer doesn't work on Mondays. I know that, because I know she works Tuesday to, uh, Saturday." He said he would have her call me the next day. The next day, he called me and said he was gonna look into and try and solve the problem. And then they kept doing some work, so on Friday, the fifteenth of February, I went back and said, "What's going? What's happening here? They're still doing work." And he said, "I'm on my way out the door to go see the town council and get some advice." On the, that was on the fifteenth. A week later, Frank Duffy responded to him in an email and pointed out, in addition to what I had given him, there was, uh, the permit was denied by the planning board in nineteen ninety-one. And he also said that there was two cases in the court in Boston, the land court. The, uh, it hadn't been resolved. And he, Frank suggested to Rod Palmer that he get a hold of the contractor and tell him what was going on, and he'd get this all resolved before he issued a building permit, which would tell me, told me that Rod Palmer never told Frank Duffy there was a building permit issued back on the twenty-seventh of December, when he answered it that way. And that's an email from Frank to Rod Palmer. The date was about a week after the fifteenth of, and that's in the file.
So these were requests to the building commissioner to issue, like, a cease and desist?
Right. And at one point, he also told me, he had talked to the builder, and he was gonna stop work until this was resolved.
But you didn't ever get a firm, written response from the building commissioner until August, apparently, August twenty?
Right, and that was a response to the letter that I sent on the twenty-first of May. Yeah, I think it was twenty-first of May. And that was only suggested that I do that letter just to get something in the record, because every, who'd know what was gonna happen after that? So I did it.
So what triggered your decision to appeal to the zoning board?
Because, and I put this in the letter to the selectman and the town manager. If we don't do something to stop this, the buil-, what do we have a zoning board of appeals for? If we make a decision, and it's in the file, and anybody can come along and say, "Oh, we're not gonna do that." You're gonna open it up for every resident in the town of Falmouth and every builder. Do whatever they want.
I understand philosophically, but I'm saying, on March twenty-one, you finally decided to submit something specifically...
May.
No, May.
May, I'm sorry, May twenty-one, uh, in writing.
Because we were gonna have to appeal this.
Why didn't you do it earlier?
Because I thought that the building commissioner was gonna do something. He led me to believe he was working on it. He talked to the builder. They stopped working, and they didn't do any work there for several weeks. They stopped working and they didn't do any work there for several weeks. And then they come back and start it again. So that's when I first sent an email to the selectman and said, you gotta do, and the town manager, you need to do something. And they, we had some conversations and it was, I had been working with Frank and, you know, trying to get this thing solved and it just wasn't moving. So that was what prompted it because nothing was happening. It was just to fill the square. A legal square, I guess you might say. No offense against the lawyers.
Anything else?
That's it.
I have a question.
For me.
You obviously live in this neighborhood.
Yeah.
You live in the neighborhood?
Yes.
And was it known to neighbors that it was not a buildable lot?
There's, there's only twelve people that live there out of the thirty-four houses. Most of the people are not, they're not involved. They don't, there's no neighborhood association. There's, people don't know. I mean, there's nobody, I would bet if you asked, ninety-five percent of the people don't even know that the town owns the other non-buildable lot on that street. Most people don't even know who owns it, you know?
So how did you know that it was not a buildable lot?
Because when I bought the house in, in thirty-one years ago, the sale, the real estate person, I asked him, why are those two lots empty over there? Just out of curiosity. And he says, oh, they're non-buildable lots. And I didn't ask for proof of, I just put it in my mind that that's what it was.
And then how did you get the ninety-one, is it the, the? How did you get the denial of the variance and the denial of the special permit on this piece, this lot?
I went to the office and had the administrative assistant just look it up. Took two minutes.
So you went to the zoning board of appeals? Thank you.
Just to see if it was in the file, and it was.
Thank you.
And that took two minutes on the first of February. And then I went, put it all together and then I went to see Rod on Monday, the fourth of February.
Thank you.
Anything else? Suppose, any members of the public have any questions, comments, concerns regarding this appeal? Anyone at all?
Can I make one point?
Sure.
Okay.
I don't know what we're gonna decide tonight, but I guess my, the second part of standing that's also relatively important is you have to show harmed, harm as an aggrieved party. And while he lives in the neighborhood, there's case law on record, which I can further provide to you, in another hearing, which goes to, there's case law where direct abutters who have claims of enforcement actions not being taken and views being obstructed, not being aggrieved persons. Mr. Van Kuren lives, to my knowledge, around the corner. He cannot even see the house. I don't believe that he can demonstrate harm. And he needs to do so to establish standing. One can't just go around looking up different zoning issues and bringing them to light. They have to show that they are suffering harm from a building permit being issued or an enforcement action or a zoning violation. That's the second part of standing. The first part is notice. And I will again restate, in all due deference to Mr. Duffy, I disagree with his analysis. The case law shows that notice starts when you have knowledge, constructive, actual, we have both of those. And the clock starts thirty days. You must make a formal appeal. Letters, discussions with the commissioner. There are cases about this where appellants had discussions with the commissioner and failed to make an appeal in the thirty-day period and were denied standing. And then the board did not have jurisdiction to hear the appeal.
Do we have more discussion? If we're ready for it? Guess I'll start. This is appeal of the building commissioner with his, I guess, inability to respond to Mr. Van Kuren's request. And I guess the situation where we have now is that the building commissioner did respond, I think it was two days ago via letter. So that changes the dynamic in terms of how I view the situation. I don't know if anyone else shares that opinion.
Well, can you elaborate a little more? In what way?
I mean, typically in the past, we've seen, we've seen appeals of the, of a lack of enforcement or the lack of the building commissioner to act upon a request.
Right.
Whether it be verbal, written, or otherwise. So the difference with this case is that the building commissioner actually did provide that letter in writing two days ago. And we have that in the file.
Okay, so I'm under the same thought. So if we didn't have the letter two days ago, I would rather fall back on town council's opinion that we have standing just because that's who we use in general. So I, I think we still had standing.
Right.
But with the written response now, it seems to me that the thirty-day period would kick in as of August twentieth. But Mr. Van Kuren would have to amend his appeal now that he has a response and then we could go forward again.
Right, that the building commissioner is standing by is.
Does that mean he has to file a separate? Like, would the appro, would the way to deal with that be deny this and approve another appeal? I mean, you know, I'm confused.
I think he could probably just amend it now that he's received a response. You know, stating that we now are in receipt of a response.
I believe that's what, what Mr. Duffy said.
Mm-hmm. I mean, apart from this case, I think that, that there have been many others that have come before us over the years where there, and not just with this building commissioner, with other building commissioners as well.
Right.
Where people have an issue and it drags on, the building commissioner never responds. And because the building commissioner doesn't respond, they don't have anything to formally appeal to the zoning board to overturn. And that seems like a catch twenty-two. I realize that the argument's been made, the case law is that you still have the appeal period and you gotta have sort of preemptively file a written appeal before you have the decision. But that doesn't make common sense. Maybe it makes legal sense, I don't know. But I think that's what has traditionally happened and I think it's left a lot of people feeling pretty frustrated with the town.
I agree with you. So the question is, I guess, how to proceed on this appeal? Do we suggest that Mr. Van Kuren amend his appeal? Do we?
I guess we do.
Do we take any action? Do we?
Well, maybe we wouldn't wanna end it 'cause we haven't received anything. So should we?
Continue.
Continue.
Pending some.
Further information.
Yeah.
You can put a continuation date in. What do we have available for next date?
September nineteen.
Yes.
The letter that I received today, it was dated the twentieth of August. That was a response to the letter I sent on the twenty-first of May. The bylaws say that he was supposed to respond within fourteen days. That was more like ninety.
So what do we have available for next?
September nineteen.
So I make a motion to continue to September nineteen.
Second.
All right. Motion to continue was made by Bob and second by Ken. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Hey, up next, we have the continuation of application twenty-nine nineteen, Miwad, which is zero and two thirteen, North Falmouth Highway in North Falmouth.
It's a mess.
Whenever you're ready.
Good evening. Nick Marioni here representing Mr. Miwad. When we last met six weeks ago, there were three outstanding issues that we continued a hearing for. One was, they wanted me to put on a plan the height of the building, the building height. Secondly was, they wanted written confirmation of my comments that I had made on the layer cake nut, that we didn't qualify for the layer cake trials. Third was to show the height of the retaining walls. We have submitted all of that information in multiple copies a week or so ago. And I hope that satisfies things and we can move on tonight. I would like to say one other thing, though. I have been working with some of the neighbors, two of the neighbors, a third one who I'd like to work with, hasn't been responsive to me. But nonetheless, we addressed it on the drawing. On the landscape plan, we're showing buffering between our Leaching Field and Mr. Dunin, our building five and the Rubens, and Mr. Wilson and our building two, I believe it is. In my discussions with Mr. Rubin and Mr. Wilson, we've agreed, because it's hard to decipher just exactly what's gonna work until we actually get out there, we've agreed to ask the board to put a condition in any decision that you make, that we need to get, the, before certificates of occupancy are issued for those buildings, that we need to have a final landscape plan acceptable to the board that I've worked out with the abutters.
Okay, anything else?
Nope. With that, we take questions or hopefully close the hearing and move on.
All right, we'll turn it to board questions. Mary, would you like to start us off if you have any questions?
Not at this time.
All right, Bob?
So I don't have a board question, but I do have a board request. I don't know if this is the right time or not, but do you know the topography here and all the retaining walls and they're gonna have to do clear cutting? I'd like to have a peer review in engineering. There's a lot of retaining walls up there. I don't know what the drainage is. You know, there's a lot of calculations and stuff and I found it helpful in the past on the forty B projects when we, for certain sections that we have one. And I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but I think an engineering one in this case, due to the topography and the change in landscaping and runoff, it's a, it's a big hill. They're gonna have to deforest up there. I know we've had them on other projects. So I, I would like to request that we get a peer review for engineering.
Mary, is that something that the town's engineering department can assist with? Or do we have to go to outside?
I'd have to check with them.
I agree with you.
Excuse me, could I hear that question? You were away from the microphone.
So what I did is, I'd like to request to the board that we get a peer review for engineering, which means the board gets somebody to review all the engineering. We've done these on a lot of forty B projects in the past if we've had specific questions. The topography here is very unique because it's so steep and there's a lot of retaining walls. They're gonna have to do a lot of, you know, clear cutting just to do the construction, which is understandable. But I'd like to have a peer review that reviews the information that's been submitted and gives us comments if they feel that all that is appropriate or if there needs to be any revisions or changes.
We go along with that?
Well, we have, we have, if I may respond, we have two retaining walls. They're very large retaining walls. One of them's a hundred feet long and five feet high at its highest point. The other one is around a hundred and thirty feet long. And at its highest point, it's twelve feet high, but it tapers off down to two feet. Those walls can't be constructed out there until we have structural drawings on them.
So what I'm requesting is the.
Is that what you're talking about, a condition that we do structural drawings or?
No, they, the, usually the peer reviews, they look in advance of what we've had submitted so far. And then they would give any comments on what they think would be appropriate. It seems to be something common with, if we think we need it on different forty Bs. I just, I think it's a good project in general. I just, I'm a little uncomfortable with the engineering just because of the topography and runoff. And you don't usually see a lot of these retaining walls in these projects. It's a very steep area down there. But I'd rather have a professional look at it to give us their comments. Like you did on, I think we did some on Alma. I think the board did them on Liberty Green. There was some previous projects. You know, I think it was different in each case. But I think it would be helpful to the board on the engineering side to get an engineering review.
I think it's money well spent.
Mary?
Yeah, I also would like to have a little discussion with the board here about doing the same or maybe including it in this for the reducing of the nitrogen because of the impaired watershed that was identified by S. Mast. And they said that the nitrogen was a primary contributor to the estuary degradation, which includes this. I'm, I know Jerry had mentioned the layer cake specifically, but I think there might be other options. So I just throw that out there for discussion purposes.
Right, so I think we'll hold off on discussion for right now and just focus on questions to the attorney.
Oh, I'm sorry.
But we, no, not, not to worry, not to worry. Just trying to keep it organized. But I think if we could ask them.
If, 'cause I jumped the shark.
I know, you did. We can blame it on Bob, no worries. I think we can ask it.
Why think?
Anything with regard to the layer cake system or any correspondences?
We submitted the letter from the, from the border health agent who had reviewed and given, whose comments I served up last meeting and the, the county's policy on it. We gave copies of both of those and multiple copies. And we do not qualify, as I stated last time. It's, it's different individual systems, up to five bedrooms and. And as far as the comment this Barry was making, Michael Porcelli has addressed that as well. He submitted calculations showing that we're under the state requirements for alternative systems, well under the state requirements for alternative systems. That letter was submitted. We, we only received the comments and question about it yesterday. We responded right away, or the day before yesterday, we responded right away. And we've requested a waiver from that requirement. And if we are forced, if the waiver's denied, the project will become unecon. And if we are forced, if the waiver's denied, the project will become uneconomical by mass housing standards. Having said that, you know, that's your decision. Going back to the peer review, we submitted this April nineteenth, I believe it was, this filing was in. I just have to wonder why we're waiting this long to ask for a peer review, which is just gonna hold us up even further. This is gonna push us out of the season here. If there's review that needs to be done, it can be handled through conditions and we can submit engineering and for the walls, which we have to do anyway for final approval.
And any other questions?
Yeah, so since you raised the issue of it becoming uneconomic, I'm just curious. Do you have an estimate of what the additional cost of adding denitrification would be?
We're told it's in excess of fifty thousand for the construction.
For the entire project?
For the septic system.
I understand. For the entire project. For all sixteen units, it would add fifty thousand dollars.
To the cost, initial cost. It also, there's also testing and maintenance to it annually.
What would that cost?
I don't know, but I can tell you, I have an alternative system in my house, and I have a single-family house, and I spend between five hundred and seven hundred and fifty dollars a year just on testing on a single family.
So, do you think it would be more expensive? Is this a combined system?
This is a common system and I'm told it's very, very expensive.
So, why would it basically be about the same?
No, no, it's a little different than that. That's what I'm told.
Testing, why?
I'm not an engineer. I don't know why, but I've asked.
So, I would like to have that information, and I'd like to know, what's the overall cost of the project?
Overall cost of the project?
Yes.
You have that. You have to submit a complete budget on that.
I understand. I'm just asking you now, because you're saying fifty thousand dollars of additional cost makes this uneconomic. What percentage of the total cost of this project is it?
We're at fifteen point four seven right now on our submittal. Fifteen percent, or under fifteen percent is uneconomical.
I understand, but if you add incrementally to the cost for sixteen units, fifty thousand dollars of cost, it's three or four thousand dollars a unit.
No.
It's just, it's hard for me to believe that if that's all we're talking about, fifty thousand dollars of cost for the entire project, that that makes the entire project uneconomic.
It's not just fifty thousand across the entire project. It's also the annual maintenance, the upkeep.
I understand, but it's one system. It can't cost more to monitor one system whether, you know, all you're doing is collecting water and having it sent out for analysis.
Have you, you're stating that from fact? Do you know this?
What I do for a living.
You do for a living?
Yes.
So, it's the same money for you to come to my house as it is to do a system for sixteen units?
All I gotta do is take a water sample.
I was told differently by the guy that does my house. And in addition, it's not a requirement. This board has given the waiver on other projects.
I understand, but we have information now from, you know, the local, this has been a big local concern. We have spent just recently forty million dollars to build a sewer collection system around one pond. We're under mandate from the state to reduce nutrient loading. We have information that they're not going to sewer in this area. So, the only solution to reducing nutrient loading is gonna be some suite of alternative systems in the area, and you're putting in a development at high density in a sensitive area. So, I'm just trying to establish in my mind exactly how the additional cost of fifty thousand dollars on a large project like this makes it uneconomic. If that's all, if it was fifty thousand dollars a unit, I'd agree with you.
No. But you know it's not fifty thousand a unit.
Well, that's what you're telling me. So, it's only a few thousand dollars a unit.
It's fifty thousand dollars, and we're requesting a waiver from it. The board can decide on the waiver.
Okay.
We're firm on that, though. It's very important to us. And it's unfair because you granted it on people that were, you granted the same waiver. This board has granted the same waiver on projects that are not in stabilization zones. In fact, some of them, you didn't even have to grant a waiver. You just went right through it, like it wasn't even important. So, why, why all of a sudden it's an important thing for us who are-
This is a forty B.
So, with the others I'm talking about.
I didn't always agree with those decisions.
So, I guess, I, I'm sorry. Questions, so?
So, I think you have a unique circumstance here where some of your other projects had individual septic systems and that the cost would then be borne by the individual homeowners as opposed to a shared system where there could be shared costs, and I think so maybe they're looking for the cost difference with the shared system.
All right. Is that different than what we just discussed?
No, I mean, that's exactly the information you just provided.
All right. So, we'll stick to board questions. Anything else, Ken?
Yep.
Anything else from the board? Mary?
Yeah, you know, I truly am very, very much in favor of affordable housing. I can't even begin to tell you how much I'm behind that. I also know that we live in Falmouth. We have more waterfront and beaches, public beaches, than any other place on the Cape. And if what we're doing by increasing the density is harming our estuaries, nobody will want to live here. And so, that's the trade-off that I think, we think about, just to let you know.
Yeah, and I agree with you. I live in Falmouth also. I agree with you, but there has to be some measurable benefit to it. To just take an area as an overlay district and say, this is a sensitive area. This should just need, we need to pay attention to the septic systems in this area because nitrogen's gonna get into the coastal ponds. The real coastal pond issue is on the other side, the East Falmouth side. Those coastal, where there's sewer-ing, you have sewer-ing plants, for instance, for the heights. And East Falmouth is much more of a problem than over here in West Falmouth. These coastal ponds drain out more than the ones on the east side. And we're in a stabilization zone, which means we're not right in one of the critical areas. And we now have calculations to show we're well below the state levels of nineteen point two or fourteen point seven milliliters. So, it's, it's just, to me, it's just a extra cost to a project we're trying to keep affordable that is just, and we're delaying it and we're, and time is money and, and I'm just answering a question. I'm sorry.
Sorry. Any other questions for now?
So, the other option for the board, just so that you're aware, is that if you do determine that you would want to consider the D night system as opposed to what's proposed, and that if the developer tells you that it would be uneconomic to do that, you do have the right to request a pro forma review to show that that would actually be the case.
I guess that's sort of the direction I'm going. That's why I asked about, since the developer brought this up, the economics of it, that we would get some kind of analysis of that, showing why it's uneconomic. Because to me, like I said, I think you made an excellent point. Some of these projects have come in and they've argued that the incremental cost per unit is fifteen or twenty thousand dollars. This is very different.
So, if that's something that you're interested in doing, you need to vote to do that.
Okay. Well, I would be happy to move that we do that.
So, request a pro forma statement.
Can we hold off on anything right now? I just wanna get to public comment.
Okay.
I'm missing this. What are we proposing here? Is this something I need to respond to? I didn't hear what was said.
Nothing yet.
Right. We're not moving for anything right now. I just wanna get to public comment and then maybe a little board discussion. So, do any members of the public have any questions, comments, concerns regarding this project? Anyone at all? And I'll just say again, like I've said on, everyone's been patiently sitting here throughout the night. When we do have multiple hearings of the same project, we just ask that any public comment, questions, just be something new regarding the project.
Estre Grady, McMenamy Drive. I just had a question regarding condo docs. I know it was brought up a couple hearings ago, and maybe you have those or have they been drawn up?
Thank you. Any other questions from members of the public? All right, seeing none, back to the board. Or I should say, if you'd like to comment regarding the condo docs?
No, I don't. I'm sure that's gonna be a condition and we'll have to submit them for the board's approval.
So, discussion?
Sure.
I mean, regarding the economics of enhanced wastewater treatment, this is always the argument that's used, that it will make the project uneconomic. I think often when we are, as I said, when we're talking ten or twenty thousand dollars per unit, that's, you know, that's a fairly legitimate argument. But that's not what I'm hearing here by the applicant's own testimony. You know, sixteen goes into fifty thousand, what, three or four times? So,
Can they adjust the condo?
It's a small incremental cost, and testing the functioning of a single system is not the same as testing the functioning of twenty individual systems in terms of the annual cost. So, if what we need to justify a denial of that waiver is a reasonable analysis of the economics of it, I think maybe it is worth getting that kind of review as Noreen suggests.
So, I'd agree with that.
Yeah, I agree with that.
The pro forma.
And Bob, to your point about the engineering review, would you?
I just think, I just think that the topography here and the retaining walls are so big and they're gonna have to take down so many trees. I just, I'd like to have some kind of review by engineering to know that what they're putting in is gonna cover the drainage, the flow, the, you know, in between, do they need, when they take the trees down before construction, are they gonna have to put membrane down? You know, it's very technical. We just don't have a lot of details on this project. I know it's comprehensive, but it's, there's more generality on this project than any of the other forty Bs that I've looked at when, as it's been presented since it started. So, I would just feel more comfortable if we got a peer review in the engineering. And I know, you know, in cases of the forty Bs, it's, it seems to be a common issue that comes up, and it's something that's allowed, so.
Noreen, do we need also a vote for that?
It probably makes sense. I will ask town engineering if that's something that they can do in-house or whether we would have to, you know, look outside to get somebody to do that.
So, maybe we should do it in one motion.
Yeah, so we'll do a motion to request a pro forma review and also a peer review for engineering.
Okay, so the motion was made by-
Is this gonna, is this gonna shut me out of comments with this motion? Or am I allowed to speak before you vote on that?
If you'd like to weigh in.
I think, I think the applicant would like to request that we close the public hearing and you make your decision so we can make ours. That's the way we would like this to go.
So, I'm not in favor of closing the hearing tonight because I want the additional information. So, I'd go with my original motion, requesting a pro forma review and also a peer review for engineering.
Okay, so that motion was made by Bob, and Ed, I believe you seconded it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And that leaves us with continuing the hearing to another date.
Maybe we should, just thinking, if what we're waiting for is those reviews, we need some time.
So, Noreen, what do you think you would need knowing what our request would be?
I mean, the next open date would be the nineteenth, but I guess the question would be how quickly somebody can, well, first we're gonna have to find somebody and potentially have a contract for the scope of work that they're going to do. I could put it on for the nineteenth or the October third would be the next date. I just am unclear that you'd definitely be able to have what you're looking for by the nineteenth.
So, is October third the safer date then, you think?
I would say so.
Sounds like it would be.
And where are we in the, in the timing overall?
I think we're, it should be on the date stamp. I think we're probably, it might be listed on top. Check it out. It's right on top. It might be on the comment page. Yeah, and so, we're getting close.
You'd still make it though, October third, that would give you it.
Yeah.
All right, so then I make a motion to continue to October third.
Motion to continue to October third. That was made by Bob and second by Ken. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. May I add one last thing for the record?
If you could.
I think this is very unfair for something that's submitted on August nineteenth to, on April nineteenth, on August twenty second, and now request a peer review. I understand we're gonna do it anyway. I just wanted to be on the record. We think it's unfair to wait that long to request it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, turning to our open meeting agenda items, we have voting the minutes from July eleventh, July eighteenth, and August first. Are they all, are they available, Noreen?
Yes.
All right.
I looked at them all.
Minutes from July eleventh, two thousand nineteen. Has everyone had a chance to review them?
Yeah.
And everyone's happy with the minutes as drafted? Great. Anyone like to make a motion of that effect?
Make a motion to accept the minutes, July eleventh.
Second.
Okay. Motion was made by Ed and second by Bob. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Moving on to the minutes of July eighteenth. Has everyone had a chance to review them?
Yes.
All right.
Make a motion to accept the minutes of July eighteenth.
Second.
Motion was made by Ed and second by Bob. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And August first. Has everyone had a chance to review the minutes from August first?
Yes.
Okay. Would anyone like to?
Make a motion to accept the minutes of August first.
Second.
Motion to approve the minutes was made by Ed and second by Bob. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And item number two, we already took care of that earlier tonight. Leaves us with number three, the board administrative approval for seventy-one dash eighteen. Bodio Twenty-One Harbor Farms Road in East Falmouth. It's a modification of a previously approved special permit to alter the location of the garage.
Yes, so that was a, an addition where the board voted to approve. The addition was set at an angle to the house. The request now is merely to square the addition to the house. The setbacks are fine. The size of the addition is remaining exactly the same.
Actually makes more sense.
Whereas you issued the original decision, I figured I'd let you look at the administrative change for that.
Anyone have any comment or wanna make a motion?
Motion to approve administrative change.
Motion to approve was made by Bob and second by Ed. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, item number four, board updates. Anything?
Well, if Jerry's watching, we can say hi.
Yep. We should say hi to Jerry. I bet, I bet he's watching and he, he's out on the injured reserve list for a couple of weeks and we're hoping him quick and speedy health and he'll be back soon.
Recordification meeting will continue next week. It's a long process, a very long process.
Sure is.
Getting longer by the moment. Getting longer by the moment.
Um, and it looks like it will be before maybe Springtown meeting?
Yeah.
For the recodification, and then they will be moving out s- maybe simul- simultaneously into some changes as well.
That sounds good. And our future workshop is on October nineteenth, nine AM here at Town Hall. Future agenda items, uh, we are technically meeting this Saturday, August twenty-fourth, nine AM at Cape Cod Aggregates. It's the site visit for their upcoming, uh, special permit with us. And I believe we're gonna meet nine o'clock on the Blacksmith Shop Road entrance to be escorted onto the property.
There will be no deliberation by the board at the site visits, merely to look at the property in time for your future board meeting.
Right.
What time, nine?
Yes.
Nine AM.
You can bring donuts.
We could. Stop by Jack and the Beanstalk on the other end of Black Shop.
There you go.
Blacksmith Shop. All right, so, uh, that is technically our next meeting, uh, but the next meeting we have here at Town Hall is September fifth at six thirty. And meeting adjourned.